All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna have an invocation by Pastor Jim Bass with Friendswood United Methodist Church, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, United States and Texas.
Let us pray. O Lord, our heavenly Father, we gather this afternoon as a council to continue the work of our city. We give you thanks for seeing us through this storm and your strength to rebuild our community. We give you thanks for all the outpouring of help from those within our community and beyond it. We thank you for those who continue to volunteer and come alongside us as we restore our city. And on this day, September 11th, we also pause to remember the attack upon our nation sixteen years ago. Remember all those who have died in New York, the Pentagon, and the fields of Pennsylvania. Remember the lives that were stolen from them. May we never forget them. Remember the heroism that was shown on that day. The firefighters, police officers, paramedics, and first responders who ran into the danger, not from it. And may we always support and honor the heroes who are among us. Remember the sacrifices of our servicemen and women who have fought and sacrificed in faraway places to keep us safe so we might gather here this day in freedom. We always, always may we honor their service. And so, O Lord, we ask your wisdom and your guidance to be upon the leaders of our city, the mayor and the members of this council, that they may continue to work for the common good of our community. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Item four, to comply with the communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment period. Lynda, do I have anybody that would like to address the council? Item five, special recognition and acknowledgements. Roger? Special presentation of the Five Star Spirit Award for the second quarter of 2017 to Rolanda White, accountant, Administrative Services Department.
Thank you Pastor Bass for that prayer. We really appreciate that. And it reminds me that heroes come in all shapes, sizes, and you're able to be a hero any day and every day. And that's what we're celebrating right now is a hero in our Administrative Services Department for the second quarter of 2017, that being Rolanda White. I especially appreciate some of her coworkers being here who have escorted her over and then guarded the door. Rolanda was nominated by a coworker who wanted to acknowledge what a great team player that she is. She stepped up at a time in Administrative Services when we were short-staffed, when we were, or they were primarily, I was watching and praying for them. When they were going through our software implementation, that's a huge project if you have enough people, but we didn't at the time. And then we had an accident to one of our key employees, which kept her from being at work for an extended period of time. Rolanda, as I said, stepped up, filled in, did things that she didn't know she knew how to do, and figured it out on the fly. Now, our employees are especially appreciative because one of those responsibilities was doing payroll. And if, well, I won't even comment about how important that is to every one of us. But that was just one example. She did so many things, and she did it with a smile. We just appreciate her so much, and I was not even joking about her being forced to be in here because she is not one that likes to be in front of the limelight or in the limelight. We're glad that we got her in here. We appreciate her, and she is a great example of showing others what it means to do whatever it takes. So Rolanda, thank you.
Hey Rolanda. Rolanda, before you leave, I gotta say one thing. I've been on council for a year and a half. I've not seen one paycheck yet.
Get what you pay for. If the council wouldn't mind suspending the rules, I'd like to make a brief comment on our city and how we fared. Friendswood owned a piece of the American weather history on August 29th, when the rain gauge on Winding Road and Mary's Creek measured 49.2 inches. That was a new continental United States rainfall record for a tropical system. Friendswood probably would've gone on to set a higher record, but the gauge stopped working. That's just one measuring point in Friendswood. It's safe to say that the whole city was inundated with at least 48 inches of rain. Lately, it's been raining everywhere, Rockport, Corpus, here, Louisiana, Florida. The phrase "500-year flood" just doesn't have the rare value that it used to. So what now? Three things. First, we pray. We thank God for the lives he spared. We ask God to comfort the families of the two men who perished in the flood. We ask God for strength for each day. Next, we help. From the Cajun Navy to the Salvation Army, we've seen them all. From Mustangs to Wolverines, neighbors and strangers, police officers, firefighters, volunteers, city staff, everyone has helped. Not only do we pray for help, but we learn. Lesson number one, stuff doesn't last, relationships do. In the last two weeks, I don't think we've heard anyone say, "I'm gonna miss that socket wrench, for that crock pot was just irreplaceable." When we have mourned, it's for the people lost. When we have rejoiced, it's for the people found. We're reminded people matter more than possessions. Lesson number two, we really are in this together. We saw and we are seeing how humanity can come together and help each other. Flatboat operators saving lives in Friendswood are on jet skis. Did not ask if you live in Galveston or Harris County. Rescuers did not ask if you were for or against a Chick-fil-A or a Carousel. Helicopters didn't rescue only the rich or educated. People came together. No questions asked. Tell people. Harvey reminds us, in Friendswood, we're really all in this together. The attitude we have in the midst of the most challenging times is the one that can also serve us best every day. So let's practice that. Let's practice what they teach us in the Lamaze classes. Take some deep breaths and hold the hand of the one who loves you. Thank you. Practicing what I just read. Work session, Tropical Storm Hurricane Harvey Discussion. Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just take a few short minutes and just give a brief report, very high level, on what has occurred over the last couple of weeks. Let me begin by saying our thoughts and prayers go out to those that have lost loved ones and whose homes were flooded. And I'm so very proud of our first responders, our employees, our volunteers, including the Friendswood Navy, and their heroic actions taken during the response to Hurricane Harvey. So I've got a basic summary and then a couple of sections, preparedness, response, and recovery. As far as the summarization, in the evening hours of Saturday, August 26th, Friendswood began receiving extreme rainfall from Hurricane Harvey. During the next five days, a majority of Friendswood received well over 40 inches of rainfall. The Mary's Creek gauge recorded nearly 50 inches of rain before it failed. Damage assessments are still being finalized, but initial tabulations show approximately 2,200 homes, 45 businesses were flooded. Water levels from Harvey exceeded the 500-year flood planes designated by the National Flood Insurance Plan. Due to the historically high creek levels, many of the homes that flooded did not have flood insurance. The city began preparing for Harvey on August 22nd, when the Office of Emergency Management began participating in state conference calls. During the next several days, the Office of Emergency Management, Police, Fire, and Public Works Departments actively prepared for the storm. High-water vehicles were tested and fueled, cots and bottled water were staged at the Activities Building. Ditches were checked for obstructions and debris. Information began being released to the public. On the evening of Saturday, August 26th, city staff had gathered for a scheduled conference call from the National Weather Service. Approximately 30 minutes before the call was to begin, the National Weather Service canceled the conference call about the weather due to the weather. During the late hours of the 26th and the early morning hours of the 27th, 911 calls significantly increased with reports of water entering homes. A response was initiated with the police department responding to its high-water vehicle, responding in its high-water vehicles. No mutual aid was available from neighboring jurisdictions as they were responding to their own rescue calls. Additional resources from Public Works, the Gauston County Consolidated Drainage District, and Friendswood Independent School District were requested. Dump truck drivers were paired with police and fire crews and were sent to areas that were still not accessible. Residents were loaded into the backs of trucks and transported to temporary places of refuge. Many streets became quickly impassable even for high-water vehicles. As more calls for service continued, fire and police units deployed boats to conduct high-water rescues. My thanks and gratitude go out to all of the police officers and volunteer fire department members who risked their own lives to save those in need. First responders continued rescues in the face of dangerous currents in the swollen creeks, tornado warnings, and while some of their own homes were being flooded. The Activities Building, James Tony in charge, was first opened as a temporary refuge, though it was quickly filled to capacity. On the Gauston County side, a request was made to FISD to open a school as a refuge. The FISD superintendent, Thad Rohr, responded personally to open the high school. Our sincere thanks go out to FISD for its incredible support during this trying time. On the Harris County side, CCISD was contacted for the use of Wedgewood Elementary, and I want to recognize Renee Barra and George Shreppes, and I'm just able to point out some of these because they were stuck in those places for an extended period of time, and I won't, can't recognize the vast majority of others. CCISD staff gave permission to utilize the school and remotely activated lights and air conditioning. During response activities, an estimated 1,000 Friendswood residents were housed at these temporary places of refuge. Friendswood has now begun the recovery process. There should be no doubts. Recovery will be a long and winding road with hardships for residents and businesses. An introductory meeting was held with FEMA on September 5th, with the future possibility of buyouts being discussed, but we will not have any conclusive information until FEMA makes this decision. It is not a local decision entirely. The pickup of storm-related debris began on September 6th with multiple trucks in operation. Storm debris estimates range from 100,000 to over 200,000 cubic yards of debris. Contractors are working diligently to remove all storm debris, but we ask that residents be patient, and debris should be accessible to the large trucks and be in segregated piles. The response for the community has been amazing. The coordinated effort between local churches and nonprofits has resulted in a strong support system for residents. The call center organized by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints was opened in Friendswood. The First Baptist Church Collection Center opened to receive and distribute donations of dry goods, hygiene items, and cleaning supplies. Mary Queen Catholic Church has expanded hours and floor space of its food pantry to support the community. Calvary Houston, in conjunction with Mercy Chefs, have prepared twice daily meals for residents affected and those volunteering in the cleanup effort. Other churches have provided counseling services, muck-out teams, temporary childcare services, and housing for teams responding from out of state. The Rotary Foundation has provided a mechanism to receive financial donations to aid local flood victims. Donations can be made through PayPal or Hometown Bank. All residents who have been impacted are encouraged to register for FEMA assistance. A FEMA team that assists with mobile registrations was on location at Calvary Houston on September 6th through 8th to help residents get registered. Those representatives moved to the First Baptist Church Donation Center yesterday and were there today. Beginning this Thursday, the 14th, through Sunday, the 17th, FEMA representatives will be canvassing the neighborhoods to check if flood victims have registered with FEMA. A disaster recovery center has been requested for Friendswood, but it's not yet known when or if we will get one. Contractors offering repair services must register with city prior to soliciting work. This registration ensures that contractors are properly licensed and insured. Permit fees for storm damage repair are being waived. I said a minute ago, there are too many people to try to thank individually, but I want to recognize and applaud the efforts of our city employees, a number of whom sustained damage, several at catastrophic levels, and have continued serving during and after the flood. Every department was represented and helped in a number of different ways. Our volunteers and our churches have been amazing. People from all over the country have been supportive. I would ask that our community continue supporting each other. And we ask for your patience as we continue working through the debris removal stage. We know this part of the process is one that takes longer than anyone wants it to. I heard someone say in the last few days that they don't want things to get back to normal, which sounds strange when you first think about it, but they said because they have seen people treat each other better than normal, they've seen people help each other more than normal, and they've seen people care for each other much more than normal. So finally, I just ask for us all to continue to pray for those who've been impacted by Harvey, and also pray for our friends in Florida and the southeastern part of the country as they deal with the effects of Irma. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we're open to answer any questions or discuss with you the impacts and what's going on.
Councilmember Rocky, then Councilmember Hill.
As I understand, the Public Works Building flooded, is that right? And we're gonna move and temporarily rent space over at the old junior high, is that correct?
That is correct on both counts. We had three facilities that were significantly damaged, three buildings, I believe it's that. The Public Works Building at Deepwood had somewhere between two and four feet of water in it. The Parks Operations Building down at the lower end of that facility had five to six feet of water in it. The building that we just purchased behind us, behind Stevenson Park, was flooded and I don't know how many feet, but severely, severely damaged. I was up here on, and I just came through to see what all was going on. It was on a Sunday afternoon, I believe, and our guys were in that building cleaning it out, and it was hot, and it was amazing work they were doing. We have had a, I want to recognize the work that our Public Works folks did during and after the storm as far as keeping our water and sewer going in and going out. That's a huge thing to accomplish, and they did it. And they were, we have one individual who we call MacGyver, and they were doing that kind of work as far as keeping things going. I didn't add them up, but I had a report of the number of lift stations and things that were damaged. Lift station number two, which is our largest at Deepwood, had a number of damages. Had that not been able to, had they not been able to keep it running, we would've been in bad stuff. Lift station number four, and I won't go into all the damages, but received damage. Lift station number five, 13, 17, 19, 24, 25, 27, 34, so I lost count of how many that is, but that's a significant number of our lift stations that received damage of varying So that was more than you asked, I apologize, but...
No, that's great. Can I make, one I wanted to, and Greg Otto sent us an email on this. Through just the timing, the new fire station had been open a couple of weeks, and that proved to be a tremendous asset. It stayed dry, and it was large enough that we could have visitors and people who were helping us stay there. And the fire station that's right over here actually would've been kind of, what'd you call it, a lake? It'd have been in a lake, it'd have been much harder to get vehicles in and out, so we were fortunate to have that facility up and running. And during the first couple of days of the rain, I had quite a bit of time to sit in the EOC, and it was amazing to see everybody working coolly, calmly, handling, just calls were coming in by the zillions. People were not getting upset, they were staying friendly, but very, very professional. I know that's a sort of an inside baseball kind of thing on how these EOCs work, but we, as a city, were really saved by them. The police, the other responders, the Fire Marshal's Office, fire, everybody that was in there, they just, it was just an awesome, awesome job. Just wanted to make that comment.
I appreciate the comment. I want to recognize Murad Kabiri for surviving on coffee and donuts and cookies and doing a fantastic job. Power Rings, I think, our police chief termed them. So thank you for those comments, Councilmember.
Some of those six-hour things, too, right?
Twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hour. Councilman Hill?
Yes, and I don't know if you can do this or not, may already be trying, but I had a resident call me today, and he thought it would be helpful if we could let the residents know where Crowder Golf will be picking up trash, what streets, on a day-by-day basis. And it might help eliminate a lot of calls where people ask, "When are you gonna get my trash?" And I don't know if that's possible, because I don't know if they're gonna concentrate in one area. They may go to several areas. A lot of things are unknown, but just keep that in back of your mind.
No, it is a great question, and it's very difficult. In football terms, they're, I think they're calling audibles on every second or third play, but we will be trying as best we can to alert people in specific areas as we know that they're going to be in those areas, to make, to have them help us make sure cars, vehicles are out of the way, and those kinds of things.
Thank you, Roger. Katina, we'll move on to the budget workshop.
While Katina's coming, she's going to go through some of the, well, quite a few of the same slides that you saw last month. We're not gonna spend a lot of time on them unless you have questions on most of them, but I'll preface it to say that Katina's another one of those unsung heroes that's been doing double duty. And we received late last week word that our values, although we had received certified values, that we had gotten a supplement to those, and so the numbers have changed. We reported to you in the past that our effective tax rate calculation was 49 cents, some odd 49. something cents. With the new numbers in place, the effective tax rate as calculated by the county is 52.73 cents. So that is both good news and bad news. The result of that, it comes from some increased values in new construction, which is to our benefit, but it also comes from values being lower than had been given to us earlier. So it's good and bad. Should council adopt the 52.73 tax rate, and Katina will go through this, it will mean that the extra meetings that we had scheduled would not be necessary because there would be no tax rate, tax increase to the citizens. And we still would be dropping the tax rate. And I'm sorry, Katina, I've stolen half your, half your presentation, but now that...
All right.
Fire away.
Okay. We're here to discuss the proposed budget for 2017, 2018. I will preface the presentation by saying that the slides will be very familiar to you. They are the same slides that you saw last month, with the exception of the changes that, some of the changes that Roger mentioned just now. We will start with our proposed budget revenue projections of 56.4 million versus 56.1 million as was presented previously. As Roger mentioned, we did get information from the tax office, and that information and the new data resulted in additional revenues of about $174,000 more that we will have to appropriate in the proposed budget. On this slide, I'm sorry, go back. On this slide, I would like to mention that, again, our revenues, the majority of our revenues are from taxes, either property taxes, sales taxes, franchise taxes, about 48 percent. Yes, sir?
Does the sales tax include the communications?
The sales tax does include our estimate for the additional, or the telecommunications sales tax repeal. Exemption repeal. In our proposed budget now, our budgeted expenditures or proposed budgeted expenditures are about 56.3 million. We went through the unfunded decision package listing, and with the additional revenue that we are anticipating from property taxes, we were able to get a little bit further down our list of unfunded decision packages. So we'll go through those, I'll have those listed later in the presentation. As Roger mentioned, our proposed tax rate is the effective tax rate that was calculated by Galveston County Tax Office of 52.73 cents. This is a decrease of almost two cents from our current tax rate of 54.6 cents per $100, or $100 valuation. Our projected new construction, in our original proposed budget, we had, we had proposed about 43 million in new construction, and that supplement that Roger mentioned from the appraisal districts yielded a new construction value of about 79 million. And also, our tax rate, as always, covers our debt service obligation on our outstanding, our outstanding tax-supported debt service. And that's about 3.3 million in this current, or the upcoming fiscal year. As mentioned to you and as a reminder, we have, we're either nearing completion or working on completing the bond projects that were authorized by, the bonds that were authorized by voters in 2013. So we've completed or nearing completion of about $24 million in bond projects. This slide shows a historical tax rate. Over the last 39 years, we went back and looked at it. We have reduced our tax rate from 72 cents to our proposed tax rate of 52.73 cents over that time period.
So this will be our lowest tax rate since, like, forever?
Will be our lowest tax rate in 39 years. This slide is intended to show an example of what the tax bill is for a $100,000 home, $200,000 home, $300,000 home in comparison, keeping in mind that each taxpayer's property tax bill varies based on their, the value of their home and any exemptions that they qualify for. It is showing a decrease over the time period that we looked at from 2012, 2012, 2013 to the proposed tax, or the proposed budget year. Moving into the detail for our general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, general fund revenues for the upcoming year, the proposed... general fund revenues for the upcoming year, the proposed would be twenty-six point two million. Again, this is about a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars more than what was in our original proposed budget, and that is related to the property tax. And we also, as Councilmember Rocky pointed out, the telecommunication sales tax exemption repeal, the revenue that we anticipate from that is reflected here. And in the general fund, that's about three hundred forty thousand. Also, franchise taxes, permits, fines, charges for services, intergovernmental revenues, miscellaneous revenue, and some inter-fund transfers. Our general fund expenditures total about twenty-six point eight million. There is a use of fund balance reflected in our proposed budget of about five hundred thousand dollars for street improvements, and that's at the direction of council. Included here, our personnel budget's about twenty, about eighteen point six, eighteen point seven million. We were able to include two additional full-time staff members, those were the, were the next two items on our unfunded decision package list. It's a parks maintenance worker and a public works streets laborer, both of those being at three-quarters of the fiscal year. Non-personnel expenditures in the general fund total about eight point one million. We also have in this year's proposed budget, and it's also an item later on the council meeting agenda, the police department radio refresh and upgrade, and that will be done through a capital lease purchase.
Does, does the personnel, the budget for the personnel, and that includes all the raises and all that that we had talked about, correct?
That, yes, sir. That includes merit for employees and...
And does it also include the same level of merit and increases for the money that we give to the volunteer fire department? For their, for their paid staff to get raises?
We actually have in, I'll have to go back through our decision packages. I do know that one of the items that has since been included in the proposed budget includes a decision package for VFD part-time...
Yes, we have, I believe, fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, six hundred.
Okay. Thank you.
Next slide is intended to just reflect the operational expenditures. These are general fund as well as water sewer operations funds. Our personnel is about seventy percent of the city's expenditures in our operating funds. And then non-personnel expenditures would make up the remainder of those. And it would be maintenance, service contracts, and a small amount of capital outlay within the departments. And our supplies, just operating supplies are included there. This slide reflects our historical population growth since twenty twelve, or from 2012, thirteen to our current, our present, we've increased about twenty-four hundred in population in the city, so a little over twenty-four hundred. This slide reflects our full-time equivalents, meaning the number of employees or average number of employees per capita. So we're looking at the population of the city by the number of employees. We have about five point seven employees per one thousand citizens, and that would be all city departments. This slide represents our governmental fund expenditures per capita, also looking at population compared to the city's expenditure budget for operations, where about nine hundred and sixteen dollars per, per one thousand. Won't go through all of the, I won't go line by line on the forces at work that are included in the proposed budget, but the total is two hundred thirteen thousand. This does include employee health insurance increases and some shift differentials in the police department are the top ones there. Our decision packages funded in the general fund in our proposed budget total about one point five million, but that is reflective of the radio refresh for the police department of about seven hundred thousand dollars that'll be funded through a lease purchase, a five-year lease purchase. And I won't go through all of those, but we'll leave them for, up for just a moment.
Katina, if you want to point out the ones that were added as a result of the change?
The ones that were added with the additional revenue, we added the two additional full-time staff members, again, at, at three-quarters of the year. So the, the column ongoing is the full year, but the total that's included in the proposed budget is in the far-right-hand column. So we have the additional maintenance worker in parks, we have an additional street laborer in the public works department. We also included an emergency medical dispatcher software for the police department, and that was about fifty-seven thousand. We have a copier, multi-function copier machine for our community development department. That's something that they've needed for a while, it's about eleven thousand dollars. And a generator cover at the public safety building also needed. Our generator right now is exposed to the elements there, so that covering will help hopefully to prolong the life of that, that generator. Also included here are the, is funding for the volunteer fire department's part-time staff pay increase. We also have a contingency, contingency fund to include in the budget. This would be used at the city manager's, with the city manager's approval for any type of emergency maintenance items that would need to be either repaired or replaced. We've used the contingency fund for air conditioning units that fail and to get those replaced in a timely fashion, so, yes.
Sorry to keep asking about this. Can I ask again about the VFD?
Okay.
You say part-time staff increase, but there are, there are full-time staff people in the, in the VFD too, right?
That is correct.
Are they going to get increases? Or only the part-time people?
Well, this was based on the information that was provided to us by the volunteer fire department. So it was the decision packages that were presented. So the request was for an increase to the part-time, the part-time paid staff there.
So the VFD supervisory staff and those people will not get pay raises in this budget?
There was not a decision package submitted for them, I don't believe.
But the rest of the city staff will?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Those, those are employees of a different organization.
Right.
And we, we attempt to fund it as well as, as we can. These part-time employees, we know, have not received pay increases for a number of years. So it was, seemed to be the highest priority from that group.
And I'm just, I'm just quickly scanning through the, let's see. There was actually, and we'll get to this slide in just a moment, but there is a, there is an increase, a merit increase request for full-time staff there also for about ten thousand dollars. And keep in mind that the process for our decision packages, we go through, they're prioritized based on the department's recommendation for that. And then our budget team vets the decision packages, ranks them, and that's the process that we've used to identify the priorities or to prioritize the decision packages.
So if I hear you correctly, they did submit something for ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
They did. And recall that we've been funding additional personnel for the past three years.
Three years.
Adding those additional full-time people, funding for them, so. The, the last item while Katina's looking is half of a request for mobile message boards, electronic message boards. And it's what's left, basically only funded one because that's the amount of money that was left available. They could be used for construction projects, they could be used in times of emergency, as we've seen recently, as we're putting them in different areas to give messaging out.
Roger? Katina? I'm looking up there at part-time staff pay increases. If we split that in half, they almost get it for full-time and they get it for part-time too. It's a win-win. Is anybody opposed to that?
We're not opposed to it. There are two divisions within the department. One has been receiving additional personnel, full-time personnel that we've been funding. The other has part, paid part-time personnel. If they wanted to split it between the two, that frankly, when the money goes to them, it goes to a different entity.
So they have the latitude to do that?
It's up to them to use it the way that they feel is appropriate.
That puts the, puts the decision on them. So I'd be in favor of that, that we mention that to, would that solve your opportunity for solution there, Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, I just wanted to share my first one.
Okay, thank you, Katina.
You're welcome. Moving into our water sewer revenues, in the proposed budget, about twelve point two million in water sewer revenues. This includes water sewer fees that are, that are charged to the customers for, for utilities, keeping in mind that we are, well, prior to the storm, we were in the midst of a utility rate study. We will continue that process just as soon as we can. The consultant has been notified, she's aware of, of what we're dealing with here. So we will have that, we'll still be working on that. It also includes some administrative fees for late payment penalties, that type of thing, and then some meter sales and small amount of interest. Water sewer fund expenditures total about twelve point five million. On this side, where it's polar opposite of general fund, majority of the expenditures on the water sewer side are non-personnel expenditures required to, to operate the city's utility, the city's utilities. We do have some debt service obligations there on that side as well. And personnel on this side is about two million dollars. The forces at work and decision packages funded on the water sewer side totaled about three hundred ninety-two thousand, included health insurance as well as employee merit for the employees that are, that work the utilities' operations. And we also included operations increase, or operations rate increase for the southeast water purification plant and some sampling, water operation sampling services. And the unfunded decision package listing, again, won't go through all of these, it's a couple, I think the next two or three slides are items that were submitted by the departments, but based on funding availability, these are the items that were not included in the proposed budget. And they total a little under two million dollars total, one point eight million. And the unfunded decision packages on the water sewers, in the water sewer fund totaled about one point, a little over a million, about a million fifty-nine thousand.
Go back a few seconds.
Sure.
So we are funding, for example, we're funding health, health insurance increases that affect our staff?
Yes, sir.
But we're not funding health insurance increases that affect the paid staff in the VFD?
Let me, let me explain a little bit the reasoning there. You recall that council directed us to develop an RFP and send out an RFP for EMS services, and that's where those full-time paid people are. So we elected, not knowing how that was going to play out, to not try to address needs immediately there until that decision was made. Now, I will say, I'd love to have that conversation with you some more as far as whether you'd like that RFP to go out or not, because based on, I believe this, this last event showed the need for us having more available personnel under the city's control, let's put it that way. Because we have great volunteers who work full-time for other folks, and we understand that if they're able to, able to get to their other jobs, that's where they have to be. Now, there are times when they can't get there and we have their services because they're trapped here, but that's not always the case. So our volunteers did everything they could and they went above and beyond what you should expect them to, to do. But that was some of the reasoning, some of the logic, and I'd really suggest having that conversation opened up again as far as whether to move forward with the RFP or not. And that doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point in the near future.
Put it on next month's agenda.
I have to answer my own question.
Okay. Councilmember Gusterson?
There's nothing in this budget that provides for charging for any of those, sir.
No, sir. No, sir.
Your estimated would be fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars a month.
Could. It could.
Okay. When are we going to do that? I would, we just... When I look at this list, I certainly see a lot of, you know, we see a lot of departments that have a lot of things that we don't fund them, and I, I can certainly understand a bunch of these, given that our budget's going to be tight and, and that's on purpose because we'd like to keep the tax rate down. But I am a little concerned about things like health cost insurance and workers' comp insurance and all that that affect everybody. And we took care of those with the city staff, but we're not taking care of that with the VFD. And they're, 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 they're subject to the same cost increases for those type of things. So, you know, yeah, I, I can, I can, I can see the argument of, well, do we want to improve the fire training field? Now's maybe not the year to do it, I got that. But some of these others just gives me some slight bit of concern that we're, we're not recognizing the, the forces that, they're, they're subject to the same forces of insurance and workers' comp and stuff that the city does and that we're, we're taking care of one group and not the other.
That's certainly a council decision. My suggestion would be that, and you can do it now, but until that bigger decision is made or that bigger discussion's had and that decision made, that funding can occur mid-year. If, if this moves forward as quickly as the mayor suggested and having that discussion next month, appropriations can be made subsequent to that. So that's just a suggestion.
Councilman Hill?
I've got a question. If they are a contractor, why don't they just increase the cost of the contractor and they furnish those perks that they want to?
That's a, that's a very good question. That's basically what they're doing by identifying specific things. They're saying, these are, these are needs, these are requests that we have, that we, whenever we fund one of these things on an ongoing basis, it gets added to the contract. Those...
Okay. Well, I was just thinking, they should just give us a number, this is what we need to protect your city. And they divvy it up however they want. I mean, we don't tell the garbage company how much insurance they need, how much they should pay their payers.
It's, it's somewhat similar in that the garbage company does come back and says, "We requesting an adjustment because fuel or landfill or tipping fees, those kinds of things." So it's a somewhat similar, not equating them to garbage contractors, but I understand. And I'm not saying better or worse, I'm just saying we're not equating them, but the contract.
Just so I'm clear, you're saying, if we were to approve this budget tonight without any changes to what we want to do with VFD, we can still come back at some point later in the year after we've made a decision about the long-term issues that we're faced with that and, and revisit the fund?
Yes, sir. We'll be, it'll be next, next month that the budget will actually be voted on, but yes, those, those adjustments can be made and appropriations made accordingly and, and then reflect whatever that service model looks like. and, and, and then reflect whatever that service model looks like at that point in time.
Does anybody have any other questions for Katina?
We've just got a couple of more slides.
Okay.
All right, um, on the water sewer, um, on the water sewer side, utility projects that are either completed or ongoing, um, we've completed about 8.5 million dollars in those, um, type of projects, lift stations, uh, water plants, the third clarifier at the, um, Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant are underway. Our five-year capital improvement plan, um, on the water sewer side, it is, it's a contributing factor of, um, and something that is being considered in our utility rate study, uh, because these projects are the things that will drive, um, our utility rates, because that is what supports the debt service that may be issued to complete these projects, or, um, the water sewer working capital would be supported by those utility rates. And totaled about 21.7 million. Um, last slide is our work session. Um, we had, we delivered the proposed budget July 31st. We had our first work session, um, at last council meeting. Tonight's meeting is, uh, budget work session. We'll also have an item on the agenda for a public hearing on the proposed budget allowing citizens to come and give comment, uh, related to the budget, and if all goes well, we'll be adopting our budget and our tax rate at our next meeting on October 2nd. As Roger mentioned, we won't need to do any public hearings if, if council proposes the effective tax rate. So that's where we are. Any other?
Just to state it again, uh, I know Councilmember Scott just, uh, just arrived, but wanted not to, not to point you out, but I wanted-
Go free.
But I wanted to point out, what I, what I did want to point out was that the effective tax rate calculation, because of additional information from the county, the effective tax rate is now, uh, 52.73 cents. So if we adopt the effective rate, which means there is no tax increase at that rate, there will not be a need for two of the other meetings that were planned to be held.
Patrick, uh, capital updates, capital projects updates? He was bailing water. That's good, that's good. There's a story I'll tell you guys later. Need any help?
Left hand, yes.
An X? And he's an engineer. Are you feeling the love?
I am feeling the love.
Okay.
I do want to thank Patrick for working very hard, uh, in, in the storm efforts and the recovery efforts with, with one arm, and there have been times when, uh, he probably was doing more than he needed to be doing physically, so I want to thank him for that.
Thank you, Roger. So this, this month's capital project update, um, we've actually completed a lot of different projects, so it'll be fairly short. The two most prominent projects that, that you recognize are the Woodlawn project. This is a view from FM 2351 looking towards Shadow Bend. Um, they finished the first two driveways, they've got the curb done, they have lined the, the rest of the street, um, they're starting to work on compaction and starting to get, uh, the forms getting ready to go, go in. I would say, depending upon whether, there is a possibility that we would be, have an item on the agenda for, for next month for this, for this road. If not, it would be pretty soon into the beginning of October that we would be done. So they're, they're moving right along on that process.
Maybe November.
Sorry?
You mean November.
No, sir.
Next meeting's October.
Yes, sir. There is a possibility, if we get good weather and we're able to continue to move-
Be on the agenda.
Then, then, then it would be, it could be completed. If not, almost certainly in November. You know what, sir? I did not calculate that in between rain days and also, you know-
Flood days.
When we're, yeah, Harvey days. I haven't, I haven't looked at where they're at.
Patrick, if you, if you would do that calculation, we'll, we'll send it out to council.
Yes, sir. I can definitely do that.
Councilmember Gusterson?
Yes, sir.
Particular issues, one of the flood days, I mean, to be fair, gonna, they, you can't possibly count that as just a regular rain day.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so you're gonna make some consideration, okay.
Yes, sir. The second project that we have up there is Lake Friendswood Park. Um, just as a reminder, that is not something that we're funding. This is something that's being done by the, uh, West Ranch or the Friendswood Development Corporation, but it is something that will be utilized once it's completed and turned over to us. This is the restroom building. This was taken after the storm. Um, I do want to point out the water level, um, where that is. The second picture is of the slab of the pavilion. This actually was taken for last month's meeting. Um, had I walked out there, this slab was probably helping to get cured a little bit, little bit better than we, than we would want. Um, the, the pavilion portion itself has been delivered. They end up building the, uh, trusses and the roofs on-site, so once they're, once they're able to get started again, they'll be moving right along. Traditionally, this is where I would start talking about our tech stop projects and also the city projects, but in light of the last few weeks, I kind of condensed this month's capital project update to just have those two items. If there's any one particular item or numerous particular items, I'm more than welcome to field any and all questions. Yes, councilman?
I did go look because I just had to, but it looks like our bridge did fine in the, in, in the thing, right?
Bridge did very well. In fact, uh, all of our bridges have done well, whether they're maintained by us or maintained by others for vehicular traffic or pedestrian.
What about the one at 1776? No one get to?
Uh, you know what? I did not look at that one. I will go out there and, and check that out, but I know that's closed for vehicular traffic, but it is open for pedestrian. So I retract my previous statement.
James is shaking his head and rolling his eyes, okay.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, sir.
You want to move up, uh, city manager's report?
Be happy to.
Go ahead, Roger.
Uh, just a couple of things quickly. Uh, National Night Out seems like time flies faster when you're having fun, and it's that time of year again, October 3rd from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. The, uh, annual National Night Out event is occurring, and this is a great opportunity for citizens and our law enforcement to, to get together, uh, and to talk to each other about how to partner up against crime. We're inviting our neighborhoods to host an event or to attend an event, uh, to, I was talking with others earlier, our neighbors, many neighbors have met neighbors they've never met before here recently, but this is another opportunity to do that if they haven't taken advantage or had that opportunity to do that. So if you do, if your neighborhood does want to host an event, uh, and would like, uh, our police officers to stop by, if they would just notify, uh, Kevin Crouch, Officer Kevin Crouch at kescrouch@friendswood.com, uh, we will get them on the list and get that moving forward. Uh, the second item is just a report, not just a report, it's a great success of our library summer reading and, uh, how many people, uh, signed up and participated, uh, despite the rumor that libraries are outdated and going away, lots of people seem to still like to read books and go there and participate in events, um, but just a few stats, we had over 3,400 kids and adults attending 45-story times, 2,600 people attending, uh, different types of all-age programs, uh, 1,000 people attended Crafts for Children, uh, let's see, in the reading program had nearly 2,300 readers, uh, from, I don't know how you can be zero, but it said zero to 18, so I guess young, really young readers up to the age of 18, uh, joined the summer reading club, and they read 34,585 books. So that's, that's pretty impressive. Our library folks do a great job, and they talked about the summer programs being successful, uh, because of, I would say because of their help, but they credited many teen volunteers as well as the many businesses who donated, donated goods and services, and, uh, there's a long list, so I won't go through that whole list, but we do appreciate them and have a great library in our community. The last thing related to, uh, Hurricane Harvey, the last thing I was going to mention was that there are plans, or there will be, uh, on September 23rd, starting at 3:00 PM, a Friendswood Strong Benefit Concert here at Stevenson Park. Uh, so it'll be a fundraiser for, uh, those who have had damages, uh, looking forward to a great time. There will be bounce houses and food and, uh, some really cool T-shirts that everybody will want to buy where the funds will go to, uh, to those, for those proceeds, and I think that Friendswood Downtown, Friendswood, if I'm not mistaken, are going to, uh, sponsor those shirts and donate those proceeds. So we encourage everybody to put that on your calendar, September 23rd at 3:00 PM at Stevenson Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocky?
Question I was gonna ask when he was talking about the storm earlier that I forgot, can I ask that now, or am I out of order?
Yes, sir.
The trash pickup, the debris pickup, how is that handled financially by the city? Is that a, an insurance thing, or do we, is that, we have to come out of our budget, or, or how, how we deal with that?
Uh, the second, it is, uh, it is recoverable, uh, from FEMA, uh, but it's contracted and we fund it upfront, and that's the, the need to have fund balance, emergency reserves and, and have that money available. So we'll be expending a, a great sum of money, uh, we'll be looking to FEMA and, and, uh, doing everything we can to ensure we get every reimbursement dollar that's- It's quite a process that you go through, uh, the contracting, the contracts themselves are important, uh, we've had amendments to our contract that we, we need to get approved, and, uh, just want to make sure every i is dotted and t is cross, t is crossed, and we'll be, uh, looking to recover as much of that, but the debris recovery is not, debris removal is not insurance, not private insurance.
Thank you. Any more questions for Roger?
One more.
Councilmember Gusterson?
Will we end up drawing down our over 90-day fund below the 90-day limit in doing this? And if so, how long are we allowed to operate that way?
We are-
Before we have to start shoveling money back in, waiting for FEMA?
It is, it is possible. I think we have, uh, a little over 12 million dollars in reserves overall. I think our, uh, over 90-day is roughly half that. Uh, so should we expend that much before we receive any reimbursement, we'll be dropping down into the, the 90-day emergency reserve, uh, and that's, that's basically a council decision. That is a, a very good decision that was made many years ago to build that reserve up and have a 90-day reserve. I've, I've been around long enough to remember when there was a reserve of zero, uh, so it's comforting to, to be able to face these things with some money in the bank, but I don't know whether we'll be able to get reimbursement before we get below or into that 90-day or not.
Oh, I can't do the ordinances. I was gonna do the consent agenda communication, mayor and council, because we're so rapid. Go ahead. Consent agenda, do I hear motion? Do I have a sec?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, second. And any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Communication from the mayor and council members, Councilmember Rocky?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember, council, newly-member councilperson?
I want a larger plaque.
But you gotta aim it that way.
Um, I'm sorry they're not in the room right now, but I wanted to say that I have heard nothing but praise for our city, our school, our citizens of Friendswood on how well everyone has pulled together, worked together, and that we are, you know, not the real competition than any other cities around us, but we're light years ahead of everyone around us. I just wanted to say thank you because I know that there are those in this room that really did yeoman's duty, and I just want to say thank you. I'm very proud of Friendswood. Thank you for the great job.
Councilman Hill?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, councilman, council lady, Branson.
Sally will do it.
Oh, Sally, that solves all the, yeah, Sally and, and, uh, my son got four foot of water in his house down in Heritage Estates, and, uh, she sent volunteers down there, and in a matter of about five hours, they had that house completely mopped out, four foot down. And I, I don't know how anybody could do this on their own without this help. It's, it's an amazing amount of work. There were high school boys and girls there. I called Sally once, I said, "You need to waive off this crew because there's people already here." She called back in about three minutes, she said, "That is our crew." But, but anyway, I, I really appreciate the help. It was, and they helped so many people, it wasn't just my son, they, they just went down the street, and, uh, anyway, I, it's gonna take us a while to recover from this, but we will.
Councilmember Foreman?
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the people that, that offered help, uh, from a personal standpoint. We, we had, uh, water in our house, and, uh, the outpouring of support was just, uh, incredible. Uh, I, I felt like we had enough help in most cases, so I waived it off, but, uh, it's just, uh, the amount of people that we had, uh, willing to help, and, and I'm still getting calls from across the country saying, "Do you need any water?" So if the city of Friendswood needs water, there's people in North Carolina willing to ship it here. I think we're okay. But, uh, anyway, I, I, I won't even try to start naming all the, the groups and people that, that came out and offered support, and personally, it's very heartwarming to see that, and so thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I also want to thank, uh, thank all the people that helped. It's just, the community we live in is amazing, and it's, it's made up by amazing people who do amazing things, not thinking about themselves. When I was in the shelter Tuesday, uh, that basically had been turned into a nursing home, several of the football players were up there helping to do whatever needed to be done for that shelter, whether it was get people to their homes or from their homes, getting them food, cleaning them, caring for them, uh, whatever, and it, it amazes me today to see 17, 18-year-old young men have a response to a voluntary football practice that is, we would rather go serve in the community. And that's what happened. And I saw the text message. And so a friend of mine and I were talking, and a couple of the captains for the football team were up at the shelter at the high school, and, uh, I told them, "Text all the varsity football team and let them know that we'll be up here at 10 o'clock in the morning, and if you want to go help in the community, uh, we will start in neighborhoods and we'll clear carpet and padding and sheet rock and all that." So I was thinking that we would show up and there would be 55 or 50-so varsity football players ready to go. Well, at 11:30 Tuesday night, I got a text from the athletic director secretary that says, "Have you seen social media?" I naturally had not, and, uh, she said, "This thing's gone viral." And from- And from, you know, about four o'clock Tuesday afternoon to eleven-thirty Tuesday evening, she said, "I'm telling you, it's every football team from the junior high to the varsity. It's baseball, softball, volleyball, track, cheerleading, cross-country, tennis, band." She said, "You can't believe it." And when I showed up Wednesday morning, there were probably close to three hundred Friendswood students that were ready to work. They didn't join packs or get together in groups, and so that they could stay with who they wanted to. They went where we directed them to go, and they worked tirelessly and selflessly from that Wednesday until Monday and through Labor Day. And then Tuesday, those of us that had jobs had to go back to our work. So for me personally, the experience of, of living in, in this city, knowing that our youth are that selfless and that caring about our community, it just makes me proud. It makes me very humble to know that that's the kind of people that we have in our community, and that our children get the message that we always try to share. So for all of the Friendswood junior high and high school students that helped, you make me, and I'm sure everyone up here on this dais, very, very proud of your efforts and your commitment to doing what was right for our community. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I don't even know where to begin. Who would have imagined, a month ago, we'd be sitting up here tonight, talking about what we're talking about, having just gone through what we've gone through. But as I think everyone up here said, i- is, is tragic and horrific an event as it was, it, it really did bring out the best in everybody in this city. And, and not just this city. Where I'm at, in the forest of Friendswood, we were cut off from quite a bit of the city. A lot of the folks that came in to help there were actually our neighbors in Paraland. And, and to them, you know, I can't say enough. They were the ones getting the boats in to where we were. Just the horror of watching the water rise in the middle of the night, not knowing when it was gonna stop. But, but, you know, the kindness of strangers, and, and, you know, the city's got nothing to be ashamed of. It, it's gonna be a long road. You know, I don't think we're gonna have that garbage picked up in the next week or two. It's gonna take a little while. But I, you know, I'd like to tell Marad, our assistant, Roger, I believe, was out of town when this hit, Marad Cabrera, our assistant city manager, "Marad, you stepped up and you shined. You, you did one hell of a job," until Roger got back. And really, everybody in the city, the police, the fire department, EMS, e- every single department did very well. I have not received a single complaint about the performance of the city, about the performance of any of the volunteers, about the performance of the county, or the state, or anybody. I just, you know, I think at all levels, it was an historic event, but I, I think we've set the gold standard on how to, how to handle something like this. So we'll be back. We took one on the chin, but it's certainly not gonna, it's not gonna keep us down. And I'm, I'm proud to live in Friendswood.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady. Apparently, I missed, Pat McGinnis wanted to speak to us before executive session. We're fitting to go there. Sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier, Pat.
I'm nervous, mayor. Who's got the cards? Because, you know, I'm a talker.
I have the cards. I know you know the rules, probably better than I do. Three minutes, one minute, time out.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen, councilwoman, councilmen, councilpeople. So I'm, I'm Pat McGinnis, and I'm a resident of Friendswood for twenty-two years, and a resident of Polly Ranch, and I'd like to speak briefly on behalf of the proposal from Verizon about the cellphone tower. My neighbor Dave Forster is gonna hand out a couple of things to you. Really, we just want to be on the public record respectfully, that we still remain in opposition to the construction of this tower. I think a year ago, I stood before you when this issue first came up, and we had our neighbors come out in force, if you'll remember that. And I'll just read the same line, the bottom line up front, as I did then. "All things being equal, it's probably not the smartest thing to put a cellphone tower right in line with an active runway." So as you know, that night, P and Z unanimously agreed with us and had a negative recommendation, and even the council that night decided not to even bring it up. So we breathed a sigh of relief, thinking, "Thank God, that, that threat is gone." But about three months later, we learned that Verizon was very intent on this tower, and was kind of threatening a lawsuit. So thanks to your city attorney and the prior city attorney, we've had a lot of good negotiation and discussion with the city and with Verizon, trying to reach a good compromise. And I'm happy to say that we did agree to three out of four stipulations that we felt mitigated the risk. But as you know, in school, three out of four is seventy-five percent, and I think that's still a D. So we still feel, for the fourth reason, that you should not accept this proposal. The first three reasons are great, and they largely mitigated our public safety and aviation safety concerns by limiting the tower. The fourth one really is about the future. How can we assure that this is a permanent solution? Because a future owner, or a future operator of that tower, can come back here with the same case and say, "You know, we really need to change the zoning to a hundred and twenty feet or a hundred and fifty feet." Only that time, they'll have a great big camel's nose under the tent. So I would encourage you to go back to one of our original proposals. There are other sites that Verizon should consider, and that's the map of the second handout that you have. You know, if you do a thought experiment with me, if the radius of a cellphone tower is about three miles, and you move the center point of that a half a mile, you're still gonna get a lot of the same coverage. And we had a telecommunications expert do that very analysis for that spot versus using space which is available on the tower already in existence. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention. I've been in your shoes. I know you'd prefer a neat and clean answer. We're reasonable citizens. We agree with Verizon's business objectives to increase cellphone coverage. We agree with you and the citizens. We don't want a lawsuit, but we want to protect our property values in Friendswood. We want to protect the airspace. We want to avoid any present or future public safety hazard. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll be available if you wish to invite us back for clarification questions in your executive session.
Item seven, closed executive session. Executive conference, in the executive conference from adjacent to council chambers of City Hall. Communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Council may convene in the executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code pursuant to 551.071. Consultation with the attorney regarding potential litigation arising from pending zoning change application Verizon Wireless, with possible discussion and action related thereto, thereto in open session. We're convened. We're gonna reconvene into open session. Item nine, public hearing, a proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018, general operating budget for the city of Friendswood. Is this you, Roger? The joint, the public hearing? Can you give me a little more than that? I announced the public hearing. Okay. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the council, either for or against the proposed tax rate? Proposed fiscal year, I'm sorry, budget for the city of Friendswood. Step to the microphone, please. Next item, I was gonna call you, Rick.
That's fine, I understand, but this is appropriate agenda, I don't think. I'm the president of the volunteer fire department. My name is Rick McPhee, and as of today, I live at three oh five West Castle Harbor in Friendswood, so I'm a new owner in Friendswood again.
Welcome.
So we had the previous presentation that was done by the city, and I just wanted to try to clarify the priorities. The department every year looks at our needs. We look at our operational budget very, very carefully, and from that, we determine where we think we're going to have impacts relative to cost increases, new programs, new needs based on operational impact, such as caulk volume increases and things along that line. And from that, we put together our budget request to the city. And we did that this year. We reviewed it with the executive board. We reviewed it with our membership. We received input from all of our membership, and we agreed upon a set of priorities. And every year, we've submitted that set of priorities in a priority order, ranked from top down. Our number-one priority this year was to receive and request for funding for the positions that were approved the last three years, where we got the additional paramedic positions, and in both cases, in two of those years, they were underfunded from the amount that we were asked, that we had asked for originally. We went ahead and filled those positions because of the critical need within the department, and we're currently now budgetarily short about twenty thousand dollars. Now, that's here and now money, not money that is gonna come about or change because of ambulance billing, or any other operational impact that we do down the road. The rest of our requests are no different. They're here and now. They impact our operational needs on a daily basis. We've put them in a priority order, and we've asked the city to respect that. Tonight, we saw a presentation that showed a request that was put forth. That's our fifth priority, and we're asking you all to take a look at that and reconsider that, and, and if you would, take our priorities into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to us? Seeing none, I'll move on to item ten, communication from the public. To comply, to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to city manager, or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizens' comment. David Allen?
Yes, in relation to the previous speaker, we don't think enough about the volunteer fire and the things that they do for us that we think we'll never have to have, have them, but we do need to support them. It's hard to think of them sometimes, but they're some of the last heroes we have. I handed out a sheet of, three stapled sheets. The first two are about global warming, and we know that's kind of a hoax, but they just won't stop trying to put a carbon tax on. Luckily, Trump didn't listen to his beautiful daughter and who wanted the carbon tax on us. It's like a trillion dollars a year. Carbon's in everything that we use: energy, food, breathing. The carbon cycle is, plants take sunlight, water, oxygen, they couldn't convince us that those were bad, and carbon dioxide, which is the gas of life. Trees can't live without it. They take that in and make oxygen. And the carbon is the center of the sugar chain, the starch chain, the wood chain, the molecules that make up those substances. We can dissolve, we can digest sugar and all starch easily, but only termites can digest wood. But it's really the same molecule and chains. This all comes from the carbon in the air. Air, seventy-eight percent nitrogen, twenty-one percent oxygen, one percent, it's not either of those contains, half of it's argon, which is kind of useless, except they put it between the panes and the, the weatherglass. And then there's one-tenth of one percent is everything else, but only four-tenths of one percent is carbon dioxide. Without it, we all die. And they're trying to say, "There's too much of it, and we gotta be taxed for it." This is complete BS. So please take these sheets home. I've handed them out to almost everyone. Maybe you can get your grade school or high school children to wake up their class by doing a report on it. Look these things up, and these are just the pictures. Okay, here you have on Chicago, nine hundred meters of ice. Thank God for global warming, okay? Boston, twelve hundred and fifty meters of ice. This is twenty-one thousand years ago. What's the fire capacity of this room? Hundred, two hundred? I, I'm gonna say it's two hundred. If you take two hundred people that lived to be a hundred and put them in this room, that's twenty-one thousand years ago. It's really not that long ago. And thank you for the warning. And this is what the ice sheet looked like. I was born in northern New Jersey, right at the edge of this ice sheet, probably about the same time. Okay, so please try to get your families to alert to that and do a report on it, perhaps in, in school. Last thing, you can read about it. Visa's paying restaurants ten thousand dollars not to use cash. Why would they do that? Remember a couple of years ago, they were starting to really jack up the fees at ATM machines? Everything you did was a couple of bucks, and people said, "Hey, we'll just use cash." And they, oh, they backed off. Well, they're trying to get things cashless again, and they'll make that ten thousand dollars back in no time by jacking up the fees again. So don't let them do it. Use cash. It's your privacy, and it's a way to keep the banks under control. Thank you very much.
Discussion and possible action regarding action on the proposed adverbalary tax rate for 2017 fiscal year, October first, 2017, through September thirtieth, 2018, to place a proposal to adapt a rate, adopt a rate on the October second, 2017, city council agenda and schedule and required public hearings. Do I hear motion? I'll make the motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Discussion.
Yeah, so real quickly, just for public knowledge, this is...
We have a motion and a second. Hold on.
Need to specify the rate that you're...
Let me make, let me make the motion. Okay. I've got it right here. I've got it right here. I move that the city of Friendswood proposed tax property rate, proposed property tax rate be point five-two-seven-three-four-nine, which is effectively a three-point-four percent decrease in the tax rate. The tax rate is composed of a maintenance and operations rate of point four-three-two-three, and a debt service rate of point zero-nine-five-zero. Do I hear motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Sorry, I negated to read that. Okay, discussion.
So just for...
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, so just for public record, it's the adoption of the effective tax rate.
That is correct.
So you should not see an increase in your tax bill for this budget. So I'd like to thank city staff for, for working diligently to make this happen. And as you're well aware, I've been an advocate for the effective tax rate for every year I've been on here. So I get my wish.
Councilmember Rocky?
Yeah, even though we, we saw a big presentation with a lot of numbers of where the money's gonna be spent, all we really are going to do tonight is, is agree to that rate. The budget itself is something, you know, we do have a, a ability to moderate over the next year, and I asked a lot of questions about the VFD, and I am sympathetic to, you know, to those costs, but we're faced with a, a large decision on that, that whole function over the next year. And however we go on that decision, I think we may have to adjust the budget accordingly, but at this point in time, we're just agreeing to lower your tax rates. In fact, to the lowest rate it's ever been, as I understand. And so I, I do support this tax rate, but I do want to recognize that we have a, a, a large issue with fire and EMS that we're gonna deal with over the next year.
Councilmember Gustafson?
I, I do believe this new budget does also include a new tax, telecommunications tax on cellphones, which we've not had previously. So we're not exactly, you're not exactly not getting a raise in taxes. There, there is that.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show to be unanimous. Hit the wrong button. Discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2017 dash oh-two, 2017, concrete street maintenance repairs. Do I hear motion? concrete street maintenance repairs, do I hear motion? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show it to be unanimous. Item 14, discussion and possible action regarding approving an agreement with Gulf Coast Water Authority to replace the Mandel Bridge.
I make a motion that we not replace the Mandel Bridge.
Second, that motion.
Discussion. Mayor?
Councilman Hill? You know, the public safety people have said this is good for public safety. The bridge has been there, to my knowledge, for 70 years. Everybody that lives out there knew that bridge was there. And I think, you know, we originally, I think we're given an estimate of, I wanna say $700,000, and now we can get it replaced for like 30,000. I just think it's in the best interest of the city to put the bridge back in. We have seen in the last couple of weeks how important alternate routes are. So, anyway.
Any other discussion? By Carl?
Yeah, motion and a second.
I would, I would, yeah, so.
Councilman Scott, would you like to talk?
Yeah, I would just say that I've met with many of the neighbors that live out on both sides of the bridge, and all of the ones affected daily by the bridge that I've spoken to don't want it rebuilt. So, they enjoy the fact that it's cut down on flow-through traffic, and several have commented that Mandel was a raceway, 'cause they knew they were out on the fringes of the city limits, and they could dart from one to the other. And they don't want the bridge rebuilt. And so, I think, you know, I recognize it's only $30,000, and I think that is a good, obviously, a win for the city. But they had a petition, they got their petition signed by most of the people that live out there, and I think if they don't want it, why should we spend $30,000?
Councilmember Gustafson?
Should point out, not only have we heard from residents who don't want it rebuilt, but I've not heard from any that do want it rebuilt. Further to the point, while the city may only be on the hook for $30,000 to rebuild the bridge, another taxing authority, which our citizens pay the taxes to, will be paying the balance of it. So, it's not as though the citizens are getting off just paying 30 grand for the thing. Just, I don't think there's enough traffic on it to warrant the cost of rebuilding the bridge. That's my position. I do not, I'm gonna speak again, mayor.
Councilman Hill?
I do not think the canal authority is a taxing authority. Also, if Patrick could, would you tell us what it's gonna cost us to put in turnarounds at the end, both sides of that canal?
A ballpark cost of around 50,000, 'cause we would end up having to remove the bridge as a safety measure. We'd also have to put in T-heads for turnarounds for both emergency vehicles and for FISD, for school buses.
And what kind of turnarounds would those be? If you got, if you first, can you put them in the existing right-of-way?
It's possible, but it's not, it's not a guarantee. I haven't gone out and specifically measured to make sure on either side if there's 100% all the right-of-way that we would need. We may have to acquire a right-of-way to do that. I think it's possible, but I haven't from an engineering standpoint.
I don't think you can do, take the bridge out and build two turnarounds for 50,000. Just my, my guess.
Councilmember Gustafson, did you wanna speak again?
We seem to be operating fine without the turnarounds now. Who says they're necessary? Why can't we just cut the road off back at the last road? What's that? If you have to have a turnaround down there.
Well, I'm just, are you asking him a question?
Yeah, I'm asking him a question.
What requires us to put a turnaround down there?
From our, from our own design criteria manual, if you have a subdivision, if you were to build any road that was greater than 800 feet, which from one direction, it definitely is greater than 800 feet, you have to have a turnaround.
Why don't we, can't we just put a blockade 800 feet down the road on either side? And be done with it, and I promise you, that won't cost 50,000?
That would cut off a couple houses, at least on one side of it.
Well, then, I mean, can't we just, can't we cut it off at the house? I think there's a solution cheaper than building a turnaround down there.
But the problem you, the problem you get into, Councilman, is just you're negatively affecting how safety vehicles get down there and how they're able to turn around.
I don't think so.
Okay, so what?
Councilman Scott?
So, I can withdraw my motion and make a motion to table so that we can get cost estimates and requirements from city staff to properly cut that off? Is that correct?
You certainly may, I was just going to, whatever opportunity, not stating a position, but the water authority, I believe, needs a decision by the end of this month, is what I've.
To keep on their, on their schedule. They've blocked out a period of time, which they would be able to do, starting in the next month, to go ahead and do it, if we were to not have a decision tonight, it would go to the back of the line.
It's three weeks until our next meeting.
Yeah, but it's this month.
The estimate Patrick provided for the turnaround is accurate. We're not talking a cul-de-sac, we're talking expanding in a hammerhead, T-head type fashion, some pavement on either side of the roadway, so it's not as extensive as what you typically see in a cul-de-sac.
Great, isn't it?
But we would also have to pay for the demolition.
Understood. Any more, oh, Councilmember Rocky?
Just so I understand, I can summarize. Essentially, $30,000 to build the bridge. Some, if we don't build the bridge, we've gotta build some sort of protection so that someone doesn't pull a deuce à hazard and go flying off over that empty, empty thing at some point. And that's gonna cost some money, possibly more than the $30,000 for the bridge. Plus, we have our own city services, fire, and police telling us that we need that bridge. Am I kinda summarizing all that right?
That's what it says here.
Well, you're leaving out that the residents that are impacted by it don't want it, but.
And the residents don't particularly want it, although it does cut off an access thing, okay?
The motion was to not rebuild the Mandel Bridge.
And you have a second?
And I have a second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we do replace the bridge.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Gustafson?
What type of bridge are we intending to rebuild, another wooden bridge?
The one stated in the backup information, where we only paid $29,413.78.
I'm making.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show it to be 4-2. 5-2, I'm sorry. I forgot to count myself. Discussion and possible action regarding approving an agreement with the city of Houston to purchase capacity for Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant. Do I hear motion? I'll make the second. Beat you to it. Any discussion? You have the floor, Mo.
Council may recall, this is a discussion that's lasted well over 18 months, maybe 24 months. Originally started when we talked about the inflow and infiltration issue we're experiencing at the Black Hawk wastewater treatment plant. Basically, when there's heavy rainfall, that plant is inundated, and it's got a difficult time processing the sewer in compliance with our permit regulations. Not from a quality standpoint, but basically from a flow standpoint. Houston, along with other participants, have been negotiating an agreement to build the third clarifier, which is just about complete. Houston is not too thrilled with their share in the cost of the third clarifier and asked to not pay anything. Based on their position, we've negotiated a compromise that we'd be happy to cover a larger share of the, of the third clarifier, provided we get more capacity in the plant. They've come back to us with an agreement to sell us capacity at their impact fee rate, which, as you know, is 50% of the cost of putting in the infrastructure, so it's, it's a good deal. What you have before you tonight is for us to purchase roughly an additional 910,000 gallons per day over a period of time. Our initial investment would get us an additional 1,000 connection, so we can add another 1,000 homes, basically, to Friendswood's current capacity at roughly $1.2 million, and then an additional 166,000 for the third clarifier.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any questions for Mo? Councilmember Rocky?
I just wanted to comment that while sewage treatment plants are, you know, never all that sexy, this is really the cheapest new capacity we will ever be able to buy. And this is a terrific deal for the city and its future.
Seeing no more discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed, show it to be unanimous. Thank you, Mo. Discussion and possible action regarding adopting the fiscal year 2017-18 annual budget for the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation. Do I hear motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show it to be unanimous. 17, discussion and possible action regarding Galveston County 2017 bond election. Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You win, John Scott. We have a motion and a second, Mo?
Quick update, council may recall, earlier this spring, we had a discussion regarding our capital improvements projects, as well as the county's discussion regarding a possible bond election in November. As a result of their request, in April, council developed a consensus to submit three projects to the county for possible inclusion in their bond election. There were the first phase of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, some additional street repair projects, and the activity building. Over the course of the summer months, the county had met a number of times, and they have proceeded with calling the election. However, their assistance to municipalities was limited to transportation projects. And what originally looked to be an eight or nine million dollar allocation of Friendswood, should an election be called and approved, turns out that they're gonna give Friendswood 3.5 million dollars. They have offered, however, to match, if the city is so willing, up to a million dollars. So, if we can produce a million dollars, whether it's private and city combination or what have you, they'll add another million to it, bringing our potential total to 5.5 million. Since staff cannot allocate the funds ourselves, we need direction from council for that discussion.
Go ahead, Councilman Hill?
I'll go next. Okay. This is a great deal for the city, where if you could double your tax dollars. And I, like Mo, I think there's some property owners out there that will participate in this. Also, if the bond issue fails, we won't need the million dollars, but hopefully it would pass. This road is, would, became real critical last week as it would have been a great alternative to 518 to access even the city hall from our side of town. It's a road that's needed, the school needs it, really, to cut down on the time it takes the buses to get from Winsong over to the junior high. And this is an opportunity for us to get some money from the county.
Well, what's, what's the total ticket for?
The roadway.
Three and a half million doesn't do it, does it?
The three and a half million does not. The roadway estimates roughly about six to six and a half million dollars. There is some fluctuation in that value, obviously. We haven't bid the project, and it hasn't been designed just yet. So, it, obviously, yes, three and a half million is not enough to build the road. Even five and a half million would not be enough. We'd have to do some revision to the scope to make it fit, but I think we could.
How about two lanes?
We can definitely build two lanes, for roughly about 2.9, 3 million dollars. Or, well, may I ask, what, from what end to what end?
Well, that would get it, that would get us from West Ranch to 528.
To 528, yes. Which would leave some money left over.
Yes, and in light of our current situation, where you were asked about how much is in our reserve fund in our storm that we just had, Hurricane Harvey, we've been harveyed. So, we're gonna tap a lot of our cash, so I don't foresee us in the near future coming up with a million to match. So, we're at three and a half. Do you, can I, do you wanna talk? No, you're finished, okay. We're just, you're smarter than me. Oh. Here, here's where I'm going. We do two lanes.
Bless you.
Bless you. We do two lanes, it gets us to West Ranch. And then for the other, other, that's left over, let's go to the creek north of 528 and head towards Pearland to tie into Pearland Parkway. For, I mean, an evacuation route needs to happen. That's my thinking, and my notes. The mobility has always been a problem in Friendswood. I'll agree with the Councilman Hill. Hurricane Harvey has reinforced our deficiencies. So, Friendswood Lake Boulevard to Brittany Bay Boulevard is needed now more than ever. Well, two lanes we can afford to do. I recommend that we leverage the county developer. There's three people that'll put up $200,000 apiece, and the city throw in some, to get us the total amount that we need to do two lanes. Ultimately tying into Pearland Parkway. That's, they're coming our way, they're, they're at Dixie Farm now. And that would, that would give us an evacuation route. That's where I'm going with this. Does anybody have any other comments? Councilman, inform me.
We own the right-of-way between 528 and the creek north.
No, we own 60 feet of the right-of-way, yes.
So, we could do the two lanes the mayor's talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when do we need to have our plan in place for, for developers to contribute?
It would all depend on whether or not the bond election passes. It is a little premature.
So, we can wait until, see what the bond election does, and then we can start rallying our developers that have a stake in this, and.
I would, I would recommend always having that conversation before the election, just simply to make sure that potential partnerships exist, but no decision has to be made until after the bond election takes place.
So, are we doing that, mayor? We, you, you mentioned you have three people, three developers already?
People that are, will help us get to West Ranch.
Okay.
They, now, that was conditional.
Sure, I understand, okay. Thank you.
One more time, Councilman Hill?
Yeah, there's allegedly three people that will, are landowners that will donate 200 each, plus the right-of-way. So, that leaves us with 400,000. It's a deal of a lifetime to get that road done. When you talk about going north, I just told the mayor, he's committing political suicide, 'cause we talked about that before. It'll be worse, much worse than a Chick-fil-A. But I'm just, I just think that it's an opportunity of a lifetime to get that road done and be done with it.
So, I guess, what happened to the eight or nine million from the county? What, what can we do to go to the county and say we need more than the?
I'll defer to Councilmember Hill, I think a lot of politics happen at the county level.
We tried.
Well, I think, obviously, we can't, can't put the cart before the horse. So, we have to wait till the bond gets approved, if it gets approved, and the election gets, gets approved. I think the development of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard to West Ranch Boulevard and 528 is imperative. I think it's something that has to happen to help relieve traffic at 518 and 528, as well as the reasons mentioned by, by Councilman Hill. As far as expanding north of 528, I, I think we just wait and see, you know, wait and see what happens. But I think, I know we're almost all in step with, with building, with building Friendswood Lake Boulevard to West Ranch Boulevard. So, that would be where I would choose to use the money.
Mayor?
Council?
Member will work.
Member, second.
I'd just like to ask a question.
I'd just like to ask a question. I do agree that, you know, Harvey grew up to the forefront, that having another thoroughfare all the way through Friendswood is very important. I don't know that making the connection to Lake City Parkway to 528 really solves the problem. I think it almost has to also go extend to the Pearland Parkway side, as the mayor was mentioning. What would the cost be for two lanes all the way from Lake City Parkway to Pearland Parkway? Do we have that number?
Not from Lake City Parkway, but roughly from where West Ranch is building the end of their street right now, to the North Eagle Creek, roughly where Sterling Creek is. And then from 528 north to our city land, city limit lines, two lanes, roughly eight to nine million dollars. That does not count right of way, though, in that, again, we haven't engineered it yet, so that could be higher than that, maybe 10 or 12.
And help me out, but I believe sometimes if you go for state or other types of funding, they have matching, 80/20 match. I know the county's offering this million dollar match. Are there other opportunities like that out there that we should consider?
We have been, yes, we have previously been on the Transportation Improvement Program through HDAC. This project has, it was met not with as much support from council as a result of citizen backlash back in the early 2000s, but there are opportunities such as that if, if council so desires.
Thank you, Mo.
Councilmember Rocky?
I'm unclear what we're supposed to decide tonight. I mean, we, we don't control the bond, the bond passes, doesn't pass. We've already put this project forward. What do we do, what do we have to vote on tonight?
What, what we're discussing tonight is the deficiency in the amount of the bond. So it's changed.
And as far as that's concerned, you know, well, one, the bond has to pass first, before you give me to talk anything. And the second is, you know, we, we've discussed this before, and we got the numbers, the county does not, Friendswood does not get its fair share of county, county expenses back. And we need to be really insistent on this, and not take, hey, we'll give you 3 million plus a million dollar match. We are 11% of the county's revenue, and we never get 11% of the projects, we never get 11% of the services. So we need to start standing up for ourselves and, and come back. So, but I, I, at this point, you know, I, I mean, I would support the bond. And then, once it passes, we, we say, you know, let's get, let's get you guys to be fair with us.
I, I would actually not support the bond unless they're going to be fair to us. We put in a reasonable number that was not, you know, above what should be expected to be collected by the taxpaying citizens of this community. So why would I support a bond that's not going to fairly distribute the money evenly across the taxing entities? So I wouldn't support the bond.
Correct. We've done our homework and about all we can do to get our portion of the bond. Councilman Hill, has been down there at the commissioner's court. I've been talking with Judge Henry, and unfortunately, another, a few other commissioners. And I'm not pleased either. I don't think we're getting our portion. We send, we send them a lot of money, just like you said, what you're preaching to the choir. I'm not in agreement with the amount that they're allocating, allotting, or giving us, when we give them three times that much per year. So now you have the four.
Well, if what we can do tonight is say, what, what you're planning to give us out of this bond is unacceptable, just communicate that back? Is that what we're, we're talking about?
That's all we're getting, if it passes.
So I, I would suggest that, you know, send a message and go out and vote against the bond.
That's your third time?
I don't think so.
Yes, I do.
The other was just for clarification.
Oh, okay. For clarification, that was your third time. Councilmember Gustafson?
What I'm hearing is the reason that we should move forward with a particular project that is listed is hurricane evacuation routes. And if that's the case, why are we putting this money into bridges across Mary's Creek that were flooded just two weeks ago, instead of this? We don't have any data that shows that this is going to improve any traffic flow.
Bridges?
I'm not going to fall on my sword over it, but I, I...
Do we have a picture to show, to make sure everybody's on, on? When you say a bridge over Mary's Creek, we're not talking a bridge over Mary's Creek.
I know what we're talk, I know what you guys are talking about. What I'm talking about is why aren't we looking to fix raised bridges over Mary's Creek? So that we're not, we're not stuck. That's an evacuation route for me and 700 and some people, or homes in, in the forest of Friendswood. Yeah. So that's what I was...
Another agenda item that we need to have, an AI for?
Well, this is a place, this is a way we could pay for it.
If it was even on our list.
But we're modifying, we're modifying what we had on the list, based on what happened two weeks ago, and, and the fact that you didn't get enough money. But, I don't know. Every piece of that road has been paid for by developers. The folks in West Ranch had to pay for all four lanes of their road, and now they're being asked to pay for the remaining couple miles of this road, for the benefit of everyone else in the city. That's just really where I have the problem with it.
Understood. Hey, Mo?
Yes, sir.
Maybe. What I heard from the council is that we'd like to talk about some of these bridges that are flooded. How would we facilitate that here in the future?
We can obviously have another council item on a future agenda for that discussion. I will say that following these type of disasters, typically, it's, it's, it's normal procedures to have federal and state dollars open up in response to disaster recovery. We had this with Ike and Dolly, if I recall correctly, back in 2008, 2009. 2009 is when the program was open, and that's how we funded the generators at each of our lift stations, that's how we funded Whispering Pines, Friendswood Link Road construction. So with respect to bridge elevations, we can look at those opportunities as well. We can even look to those opportunities to fund this roadway if we wanted to take it further than what's being proposed.
What I heard from this council is that we ought to pull out all the stops, but roads like winding, we can do something about by putting it on the tip. Traffic improvement program. But text dot roads, we have no authority there.
We don't. They would obviously listen if we paid for it, but we would be looking to them and other agencies to pay for it.
There's a few things we'd listen to if they'd pay for them, too.
Correct.
That seems to be the relationship we have.
Correct. And I know Public Works and the Fire Marshal's Office are working tirelessly to update various plans, and also make sure that we have our documentation in line to submit for those disaster recovery dollars when they're made available.
Okay. So we've discussed this, I didn't, I don't see any direction coming out of it? Were we hoping to get some kind of direction? Roger, clarify that for me? I think we all were.
We're being asked to provide information, more detailed information to the county to help support the bond, so...
Do you think it's prudent for them to read our minutes?
I think if, if you can, if someone could summarize what you believe the consensus is, that would help us provide that to them.
I don't think there's a consensus that we support it. Councilman, Councilman Rocky?
This, just, go ahead and go. This council is concerned that the amount of money the county is going to offer out of this bond is insufficient to build the road that we want to build. We, we, we are not to the point of saying, don't send us the money, don't give us anything, but we feel like we, we are a bigger revenue source to the county than the percentage of money they're going to offer back in these projects. And we, we want to see more coming out of this. And we'd be happy to have further discussions, but our, but we are not willing to support the bond yet, until we, until we have further discussions on what's possible. How close did I get? Well, let's keep our powder dry here.
The problem on the commissioner's court is similar to the problems here on the council. If it's not good for their side of town, they don't seem to want to support it. But those of us that live over there and deal with this traffic every day, it's important to us, it's important to the school. And the fact that the county commissioners, the county judge is, is really wanting to get more for Friendswood. He's, he's just like me, he's got one vote. And, and you've got three commissioners down there that probably aren't even real sure where Friendswood is. So that's what we had to deal with. We've got the best we can get, and I thought we were only going to discuss tonight whether we wanted to match the million dollars, which 600 will come from private people. That's why I'm thinking we're, we're just, it's, it's an opportunity to get this road done, and then move on to the future on other projects. And we can't do text dot roads.
Mayor?
Councilmembers? That's flowing.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I would say that if we were able to connect to, from Lake City Parkway to Pearland Parkway, we'd be helping more than just Friendswood. We'd be helping those folks up and down. And when you're trying to do an evacuation, I think that's critical. And I certainly think it would help with the traffic flow on Friendswood Drive, which is annoying at times, depending on if you're going to work and school, or if you're trying to come home from work or school. But I believe that that would be very, very helpful, and I think that the county would want it, because that's all in Galveston County. I would think that the county would want to support that as an evacuation route.
I've all spoken once.
Huh? I can count.
I only spoke once. Someone else spoke three times.
Go ahead.
Not you, even. No. But I'm sure that, I guess, it's very kind of these landowners to want to pitch in $200,000 apiece, but it, that $200,000 is going to net each one of them considerably more in gain than that $200,000 in the value of that property. So, you know, they should be paying to build the road in its entirety. I, I wanted to be clear about that, and...
So your summation, you believe it to be correct?
If I could add on the front, because I thought what Jim said was, we already went through the exercise and said this was our number one project to the county, and, and we did it, we didn't send 18 million projects like League City and everybody else did, we sent essentially one that we really wanted. So this was our top dog. We don't think they're funding it.
So in, in my summation is that we don't think we're getting our fair share, and we're not happy about it. And the commissioner's court needs to be aware of that. Now, is that subtle enough? Okay. We're just sending a message to the commissioner's court.
This is just a question, I'm not commenting. So if, the amount of money from this bond election coming our way has already been determined by the commissioner's court, and there is no revisiting that number? Perfect. Okay. Then I won't support it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item. Discussion and possible action regarding executing a lease purchase contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc., in the amount of $500,000 for the purchase of 85 portable handheld radios and accessories, including a promotional trade-in incentive which is good until September 30th. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Chief, if you would please clarify for the public?
Briefly? So we've been in the process of updating radios, consoles. If you remember correctly, in a workshop, Steve, you were a subcommittee member of that workshop, we estimated that it was going to be a $1.5 million project. So the first installment was the replacement of the consoles, and those consoles were done, for the most part, with grant money. Subsequent to that, we purchased radios for the volunteer fire department, and those were funded last year. This actually, I don't want to call it a split buy, because that sounds like we're circumventing something, but what we're doing is taking advantage of a $50,000 incentive that Motorola's given us to book something here during the fourth quarter, because as they'll admit in the back of the room, they're not booking any work in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. So that's why the promotional opportunity is here during this fourth quarter. That leaves us one final segment to do, which is the remainder of the radios in the police vehicles. We have a grant application out for that, and we think we can save another $65,000 by waiting on that purchase until after the first of the year. So the net result is that I had hoped that we would save somewhere in the vicinity of about $100,000 by timing our purchases correctly, and I think we're going to, I think we're going to hit that mark. Now, for those of you that are wondering about what happened in the Texans game, Motorola also provides communications for the Texans. And as a matter of fact, their technical advisor is sitting there in the back of the room, if anybody has any questions about what occurred on Sunday.
Do they also handle the Patriot staff?
We have to remember their offensive coordinator went to Alabama.
Wow.
Okay. Let's, moving on. Chief, you might want to protect this Motorola man on the way out. We have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, show it to be unanimous. Ordinances, ordinance number 201722, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood to allow existing billboards to convert to C V E M S signs. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be 6-1. Ordinance 201723, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning section 8, supplementary district regulation subsection A, visibility at intersections in residential districts, subsection B, fences and walls and hedges, and amending section 20 definitions, section II, fence. Do I hear a motion? Got a motion, second? Discussion? Seeing none?
Yep.
Oh, Councilman Scott?
So when we had proposed this to P N Z, we'd actually made the recommendation at 120 feet. And now that is being moved to 150 feet, I believe, in this proposal?
Yes.
This proposed amendment?
Yes.
Second and final reading?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Are there, the properties that have fences currently will be grandfathered into it, I'm assuming, from this point forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show it to be unanimous? Am I right, Carl? No, did you? Oh, Councilmember Sally, were you up or down? You were halfway, so... Up, down? Down. Five, two. Ordinance 201724, second and final reading of an ordinance providing for the repeal of telecommun, telecommunications service sales and use tax exemption within the city of Friendswood, Texas. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion, second? You have a motion and a second on our second reading? Do we have any discussion? Councilmember Gustafson?
Do we have an estimate of what that yearly tax will be to the average citizen per phone? What is that number? Huh?
At the last, last month's meeting, they said $2 a month.
Okay.
Just on their data package?
Yeah, it's not on the...
It's not on the phone, it's just on the data plan, it's $2 a month?
Yeah.
It's $25 a year? Per phone? Four, four, five phones, it's $100 bucks a year?
Per plan.
Per plan? So per, per, per bill or per phone? I don't... I don't know. That's a bit more palatable. All right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show to be four to three. D, ordinance twenty seventeen twenty-nine, first reading.
What?
Four to three, right?
Seven.
We approved it.
Okay. Who did you vote?
Me, I went up. I, I voted to approve it. So, one, two, three, four. Orders twenty seventeen twenty-nine, first reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for a tract or parcel containing point one eight acres located at two twelve East Parkwood, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change for Community Shopping Center, C S C, to Community Shopping Center Specific Use Permit, C S C to S U P for any I C, any I C S use five seventeen telecommunications. Do I hear motion?
Much different.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion, we have a motion and a second. Carl?
To be clear, this is the item that allows Verizon to put a cell phone tower in the flight path of the Poly Ranch private airport. Correct?
Correct.
Below the flight path, I think. In line width, but below.
In line width.
Any discussion, any questions? Councilmember Rocky?
Just summarize some of the information that we got. This, this, it's at eighty feet, it's not much taller than some of the trees around it. This is a compromise. Originally, it was supposed to be a hundred and twenty feet, and it was dropped, and Verizon made some other concessions, but they still wanted it at eighty feet. There's a concern by this, the pilots in Poly Ranch that they may come back someday, and this might be a bait and switch, and then want to go up another thirty or forty If, if we deny this, we probably get the city sued. The advice of the attorney was that, that we're, it's a stronger case if we approve it, and later, if they try to raise it, we can, if we're ever in court, we can always say, look, we gave them the eighty foot, and they, and now they want to go higher. It was also the opinion of the attorneys that if, if we sue, if we denied it and we sued, Verizon would then come back and go to court and ask for the hundred and twenty feet right now. And they'd probably, you know, have a chance of getting it from the court.
Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Six one. Orders twenty seventeen thirty, first reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for a tract or parcel containing three point two oh two acres located at F M five eighteen in Leisure Lane, known as seventeen fifty-seven South Friendswood Drive out of Reserve V in the Howard subdivision to be recorded, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from Office Park District to Community Shopping Center. Do I hear motion?
I make a motion to approve, provided no curb cuts to Leisure Lane.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Your first, then he'll second?
I have no discussion.
As it is proposed, there is no curb cut to Leisure Lane.
Correct.
Councilmember Rocky?
Just for my own understanding, I understand this is a compromise that the developer did with the neighborhood, and it, he took his property and divided it basically into three and left the property along Leisure Lane as, as O P D. And we're going to, you know, vote to, to rezone the other pieces of property. I was surprised, I, I was, I kind of wanted to hear from some of the neighbors tonight, but none of them spoke up, so. I know, but you missed your chance. Can we, can, so the, what I want to ask the mayor was, can we ask, can we, can we ask for some of the opinion now or not?
I'll defer that to Mary Kay.
You have that discretion if you choose to.
Can we limit it to two or three people?
Two, like normal, three minutes?
Yes.
Apparently they missed their time to speak.
Yes.
Sure.
So if, if y'all would like to speak out, either for or against the compromise, please come up to the microphone.
And you have three minutes apiece.
I'll hold up the yellow card when you have one moment left, and I'll hold up the red card when your three minutes is up.
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. I'm not sure how we missed the protocol, but I appreciate it. My name is Jennifer Rollins. I live in Eagles Point subdivision. I've been a Friendswood homeowner for fifteen years and have lived there the whole time. And I know we've had a lot of discussion over the past few months with you individually and also in this format, as well as with the Planning and Zoning Committee. We've also met independently with Vergata as a neighborhood to try to work out some compromises. And I know that it looks like maybe we have on paper, because their latest rendering only shows less than four acres that are actually being asked to be rezoned. But I think that there's some, that's problematic. I know I've, I've also written to y'all about some of these things, emailed y'all about some of them, but I do believe that the developer in this case has just continued to not follow through or keep their word to us, and that's very concerning. They still haven't given us a copy of the traffic study that was promised back in March. When we met with them in August, they said they had just received it, but we have never been able to lay hands on it or look at it ourselves. They told us in August, when we had a compromise meeting at the library, that they would try to mitigate with some, an environmental barrier or a green space, but on the latest rendering that they submitted, it shows a parking lot all the way up to Leisure Lane. There's no indication that there'll be a sidewalk there for safe travel for pedestrians and non-motorized vehicles. They initially asked for, for the whole eight acres to be rezoned, because at the time they were representing Mr. Howard in his interest. They, after that, went and bought only the, the front four acres. So they did tell us initially that they were going to try to develop that detention pond as a green space for the neighborhoods to enjoy and things like that, but then they didn't buy it. So they don't really have any fiscal accountability or responsibility for that. It's going to be Mr. Howard's and whether or not he chooses to do that. I just want to say that I'm not sure that we're dealing with men of integrity, and I hope that the people that are on city council are men and women of integrity, and that you understand that the predecessors in city council intentionally changed that zoning that was originally, that was earlier commercial shopping center to O P D when they approved the development of these neighborhoods that are adjacent to it. And I hope that you will keep the word of the city of Friendswood, the promise that was made to these residences. You don't over-Gotta, but you did make a promise to us, and I hope that you'll keep your word and vote no for this zone change. And understand that what looks like a compromise maybe on a rendering may not really be a Thank you.
In case you didn't believe me that it was over. Sorry. Hi there, I'm Jennifer Ross, and I'm a resident of Eagles Point. I am P T L president of the junior high, last year of wind song, soccer mom, I'm on, I help with the superintendent. I am your Friendswood mom. Okay, I just want you to, to think of me as, as a regular old citizen. You have a big vote tonight, and you're setting a precedence that I think a lot of people are really going to be looking at. Your vote tonight is going to be showing how much you value the foundation of Friendswood and how it's going to be developed forward. In the nineteen seventies, that council, when they were deciding to make our, you know, develop, develop our neighborhood, they actually changed the, the zoning of this parcel that we're talking about, from whatever it was before to O D P, O P D, whichever it is, to protect the residents that were, we're going to be living there from fu- future commercial infiltration. Thank the Lord they did that, because we love where we live. And that was actually part, we, we did our research when we bought our house. We wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be next to a mall or whatnot. So we, we did, we did look into it. So we have this vote tonight, and how we got here is so shady. Originally, the developer told us about the eight acres. We, as a neighborhood and the, the people who could protest, we did file the protest. It was legit. And then they backed out of that, and they said, okay, let's make it four, because they got rid of the pond. And now, I, I don't know where this whole compromise thing is, we haven't heard any of that. Now it's down to the three point whatever acres, and they've shrunk it just past the two hundred foot mark, so the residents don't have a chance to protest. It's not right. And I think everybody can see that. So, um, I just, the precedence, I just want to make sure that for every one of us, wherever we live, if you happen to have empty space near you and developers come in, please think about how you don't want all future good work by the, this, the council to be gone. Because in ten to fifteen years, if we just let all these developers come and sit right down to where we live, we're not going to be the Friendswood we are. We're not going to get the best city in Texas awards. We're going to be like everybody else. So please protect us, the citizens. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Olivia Beauty. I'm a longtime Friendswood resident. My family lives on North Clear Creek. We took three feet of flooding. I know many of y'all took water, too. For me, the biggest problem is this, is, is like the shady dealing where they went to a lower parcel so they could act like they were compromising with us when they're not. They want to put a fast food restaurant in there, and y'all were talking about traffic. Y'all already know how many accidents we're having at the intersection of five eighteen and five twenty-eight. We're having those also at Winding Way and five eighteen. Five, yeah, five eighteen. Because like Mo said, traffic's like water. It finds a way around. And so they're taking all of these shortcuts through our subdivisions, and they're going to continue to do that, and we're going to continue to have more, more accidents, more fatalities, and more crime. I'm okay with it being just an office park. I asked city council to leave it as just an office park. We don't need more fast food restaurants, we have plenty. We couldn't use them during Harvey, we only had H E B, and I was good with H E B. We have office space that's currently empty and not being used. So I, I don't understand why, I mean, to me, it's just, it's just about money. And so when we look outside of our houses, what we see outside our front door is, we're going to see another, what, Jack in the Box, another fast food restaurant. For what benefit? I just don't see the benefit to the city when we could get the same tax dollars from office, from an office park. And ignore, and have less traffic, have less issues, problems, give people predators, people like that, less opportunity to have a reason to be here, especially during nighttime hours when we don't need them. I'd also like to know if we could get a revised environmental impact study post flooding on this. I'm concerned about the retention pond and that green space being taken out, those, because currently now, we have space where water could go. Since they've made their parcel smaller, that means that they've actually, they have no control over that retention pond. So you could take that retention pond and they could cement it over and use it for something else, which means we have even more likelihood of flooding back there, which, we have all those homes back there that flooded that have never flooded before. You look at North Clear Creek, South Clear Creek, and Leisure Lane, we have homes, almost all those homes on those back streets flooded, and they've never flooded before. So I'd ask, I'd ask council to, to say no, to vote no, and I thank y'all for letting us speak. I think we have one more person or two more. Thank you.
We agreed to three.
Am I good, or?
You're good.
Cut it off. Jim Peterson, developer, Vergata Properties. In spite of the conspiracy theories, to the contrary, we were never under contract by Mr. Howard's detention pond, it was always his. The intention from day one was always for that to be transferred to a property owners' association, who would manage it for the benefit of those three property owners. And I've shared with the council and the city the ongoing negotiations with that property owners' association, the intent of that property owners' association to fulfill its obligation with respect to maintenance, with respect to the aeration system that's been requested. All that's been, been agreed upon by everyone. It was not pulled from the zoning change request for, for any reason other than it wasn't ours. It was never ours, never was intended to be ours, we didn't have it. The compromise is two, two things we've heard from the beginning is traffic and buffer. Our compromise offer that we're looking at tonight addresses both of those issues. We agreed not to seek a curb cut on Leisure Lane, which should mitigate any traffic impact from our development on Eagles Point, and then two, leaving the O P D buffer on the corner. So that was our intent, was, was to make that compromise and, and meet them there. And so that's what y'all got tonight. Appreciate it.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
You agreed to a letter of credit until you have that property owners' association done in the aeration?
Yes, yes, and I, I will, as far as the maintenance goes.
If it passes, I would like the letter of credit to be held until you get that signed agreement.
Well, yeah, we will, we will do that.
On the pond.
We will, we will back that up if it's not done. I'll make that representation.
So you're agreeing to the letter of credit?
Yes.
Have you discussed the amount of the letter of credit with him? Okay.
We discussed a bond.
Letter of credit bond, same thing.
Yeah, well, I was told today that a bond wasn't workable for some reason, and we were trying to work through that prior to the meeting tonight to understand what it was.
Should be a letter of credit, this is the same thing.
Yeah.
So I'd...
We'll, we'll work with you to put some backbone behind that representation.
Then I, I'm in agreement with that, but if this passes tonight, I'd like to add a caveat that we have a letter of credit till we get the P O A agreement and the aeration of the pond. Okay? Are you in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. And we have one more person, Mr. Santos, you want to talk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, step to the microphone.
Thank you. Santos Vanegas, eighteen oh five, Eagles Cove. First of all, I do want to thank all of you for all your responses during the, the recent tragic event. Thank you for the information that you provided to us and the services, and your attention to all of us who went through these changes in our life. The last week and even today, you know, people have been displaced, and it's been a lot of abnormal activity. And thank you for being there for, for us, city council, mayor. Now, having settled that and going back to the subject in hand, it would have been nice to postpone this, when some of us would have been a little bit more prepared, but I see that at least we're moving along and making progress. The, you know, as communications in our last encounter, this area has been zoned O P D for thirty-five years, and probably due for various residential neighborhoods to include Eagles Point, Poly Ranch, Fairfield, Parkwood, and to name a few others. You know, the elected city council's member felt that it was strong enough for that to be O P D, that was thirty-five years ago. And, and you as elected officials, I would like for you guys to respect that. You know, respect the fact that it was set O P D for a reason. You know, there's not enough resources in that area. You know, yes, sure, the, the area is prime for business, it's perfect, I'm sure it'll draw good tax revenue, but there's not enough resources. City council is selected to, not to create problems, to keep problems from happening. Making this C S C, you know, and increasing the level of vehicles that's already at twenty thousand with a fast food business in that area is, is only going to create more problems. So I want you to consider that as you get ready to vote, and just keep it in mind. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocky, you asked for them to speak. Would you like to comment?
Could we redo the motion to add that letter of credit? Do we, are we going to redo it as a motion?
I would like to amend the motion if it, if, sure, yeah.
Then I will amend my motion to include the letter of credit.
And the P O, letter of credit for aeration of the pond? Letter of credit for iteration of the pond.
Iteration of the pond.
Agreement.
And the P O A agreement.
Thank you. And we'll, who had the second on this? Council, councilperson Sally? No?
Jim.
You had?
Mike Foreman.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Hill?
I would just like to say Planning and Zoning did approve this. I can't, the word can't come to mind. The compromise. They approved this compromise and they were thrilled that, that people were able to work together and come up with it and it was unanimous.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended motion? All those opposed? Show to be 6-1. Item F. Ordinance number 201731, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment 13 to the original general budget of the City of Friendswood for fiscal year 2016-2017. Do I hear motion? We have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed. We are adjourned.